Call this meeting forward to the pleading of the events.
I plead the allegiance to the right of the United States of America and to the brotherly for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, the liberty and the justice of all.
Brokaw. Hula. Here. Hula's here. Vieira.
Here.
Vieira here. Bellato.
Here.
Bellato here. Rita.
Here.
Rita here. Donahue.
Here.
Donahue here. Carr. Carr absent. Slattery.
Here.
Slattery here. Ossling.
Here.
Ossling here.
Here.
Pittman here. Johnson. Johnson absent. Frausto.
Here.
Frausto here. Thompson.
(coughs)
Thompson absent. Johansson.
Here.
Johansson here. Holly.
Here.
Holly here. Eleven eyes.
Thank you, but we'll move on to the next piece of business presentation of general proceedings. I need a motion to approve the city council matters for the date of October the 25th, 2016. Do I have a motion by Alderman Hullos, second by Alderman Donahue? Any questions? Brokaw, please.
Hullos.
Aye.
Hullos aye. Vieira.
Aye.
Vieira aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery aye. Ossling.
Aye.
Ossling aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman aye. Frausto.
Aye.
Frausto aye. Johansson.
Aye.
Johansson aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly aye. Eleven eyes, your honor.
Thank you very much. Council?
You are all welcome to this evening's meeting. You are politely reminded that the purpose of the meeting is for deliberation and discussion of city governance and business by the city council and the mayor. If you intend to speak, please once recognized by the mayor, approach the podium, announce your name and address. Please be further advised. On this may be limited to three minutes. Report it to the appropriate city personnel for approval.
Thank you very much. Anyone? If not, we'll move on regarding the mayor's announcements. Again, I want to thank and I know our Alderman Tom Holly's here with all the volunteers regarding the planters that happened over this past Sunday, up and down Western Avenue, getting Western Avenue ready for Christmas season. Again, I want to thank them. And a little for your information only, the Maple Tree Inn, our famous Maple Tree Inn, was recognized as the top one of the top 25 restaurants in Chicago metro area. A little information there. And then, we have on November the 30th, Wednesday, November the 30th, from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. at the John D. V. R. Center, we have the City of Blue Island presents the Blue Island Fire Department Community Meeting. Again, all are welcome. Again, regarding safeguarding your home from fire, and if you want to learn more about how to keep your family safe and property safe, please attend this meeting. And if you need more information, please contact Mr. Bob Jackson. I'm going to read out the numbers. 708-926-2015. 708-926-2015. Again, on November the 30th, which is a Wednesday, from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. And also, I want to thank everyone. Holiday season again. Happy Thanksgiving to all. And we move on. Any bids?
No bids, Your Honor.
City courts business?
No business, Your Honor.
Uh, city treasurer?
There's, Your Honor. First of all, the reconciliation for the month that being, October 31st, 2016. All the officers who received this in the packet, do I have a motion for that case?
Do you have a motion today? Do you have a motion by Alderman Tom Holly, second by Alderman Villa? Any questions? And Brokaw, please.
Hullos.
Aye.
Hullos aye. Vieira.
Aye.
Vieira aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery aye. Ossling.
Aye.
Ossling aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman aye. Frausto.
Aye.
Frausto aye. Johansson.
Aye.
Johansson aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly aye. Eleven eyes, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Council?
You are all welcome to this evening's meeting. You are politely reminded that the purpose of the meeting is for deliberation and discussion of city governance and business by the city council and the mayor. If you intend to speak, please once recognized by the mayor, approach the podium, announce your name and address. Please be further advised. On this may be limited to three minutes. Report it to the appropriate city personnel for approval.
Thank you very much. Anyone? If not, we'll move on regarding the mayor's announcements. Again, I want to thank and I know our Alderman Tom Holly's here with all the volunteers regarding the planters that happened over this past Sunday, up and down Western Avenue, getting Western Avenue ready for Christmas season. Again, I want to thank them. And a little for your information only, the Maple Tree Inn, our famous Maple Tree Inn, was recognized as the top one of the top 25 restaurants in Chicago metro area. A little information there. And then, we have on November the 30th, Wednesday, November the 30th, from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. at the John D. V. R. Center, we have the City of Blue Island presents the Blue Island Fire Department Community Meeting. Again, all are welcome. Again, regarding safeguarding your home from fire, and if you want to learn more about how to keep your family safe and property safe, please attend this meeting. And if you need more information, please contact Mr. Bob Jackson. I'm going to read out the numbers. 708-926-2015. 708-926-2015. Again, on November the 30th, which is a Wednesday, from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. And also, I want to thank everyone. Holiday season again. Happy Thanksgiving to all. And we move on. Any bids?
No bids, Your Honor.
City courts business?
No business, Your Honor.
Uh, city treasurer?
There's, Your Honor. First of all, the reconciliation for the month that being, October 31st, 2016. All the officers who received this in the packet, do I have a motion for that case?
Do you have a motion today? Do you have a motion by Alderman Tom Holly, second by Alderman Villa? Any questions? And Brokaw, please.
Hullos.
Aye.
Hullos aye. Vieira.
Aye.
Vieira aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery aye. Ossling.
Aye.
Ossling aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman aye. Frausto.
Aye.
Frausto aye. Johansson.
Aye.
Johansson aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly aye. Eleven eyes, Your Honor.
Thank you very much.
Second of all, Your Honor, I'd like to give the court of authority a real little brief summary of the audit of 2015. Just to, again, these are just highlights. An audit consists of more than just these highlights, a very detailed, just for the audit, just a brief summary. The general fund as of December 31st, 2015, the general fund had an operating surplus of $596,824. This means the operating revenues, I see it, the operating expenditure to the general fund. Comparison is that as of April 30th, 2013 audit, the general fund had an operating deficit of $1,222,788. Water fund, as of December 31st, 2015, the water fund had an operating surplus of $1,564,192, which is revenues over expenditures. Again, with the water fund, without being too into depth, with our sewer system and water mains and health, age of our town, this is somewhat okay, but we need to increase available, available funds. Golf course fund, we have made significant changes to the golf course by increasing revenues, decreasing expenditure, to making sure things are running more efficiently. We will continue to improve the golf course in the future. Pension fund, police pension fund, the plan is funded at 27.43%, which is a net pension obligation of $26,495,961. Fire pension fund, the plan is funded at 22.55% with a net pension obligation of $16,975,264. The long-term pension obligation is $43,471,225. Again, it sounds like it's, it is one of our long-term debts, but comparatively to other communities and other that I've heard of, they're not that far off, that, that bad. Everybody's in the same boat. Internal controls, the city is committed to looking at each department that handles or brings in money to make sure that the correct process and internal controls are in place to efficiently run each department. And this has been through the efforts of our consultant and our order, Mr. Casper, and our department heads and our directors, all working together, finding what, how we can improve our situation to make it more efficient. The rec center, the rec center was rehabbed and is up and running. There will always be work in progress, but we are off to a great start. I've gone there once a, once a weekend leave down there, it's improved, it has an atmosphere of going into a, like a school, school auditorium. It's very well put together, managed by the Park District and by the City of Blue Island. At this, Your Honor, I have a motion to accept the audit ending December 31st, 2015.
Do you have a motion? By Alderman Hullos, second by Alderman Donahue. Any questions from the auditor? None? Brokaw, please.
Hullos.
Aye.
Hullos aye. Vieira.
Aye.
Vieira aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery aye. Ossling.
Aye.
Ossling aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman aye. Frausto.
Aye.
Frausto aye. Johansson.
Aye.
Johansson aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly aye. Eleven eyes, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Anything else?
Uh, yes. There was also discussion about the Business Development District, about the environmental graphics and some continued work on the design of the Business Development District on Western Avenue. Under Alderman concerns, Alderman Johansson asked about who bought the bank buildings. A company called F9 Properties is an investor based in Florida, and the principal made his money starting lumber liquidators incorporated. Typically, they do strip mall and big box retail. Their staff indicated that this is a different buy for them and that they are trying to diversify their portfolio. They're working with local brokers. Jason talked to them about the business district and zoning requirements. They're currently closing on the, they were closing on the properties, and they will be in town in October to talk to the city. On 119th Street, Christie Weber left the property. The property owner is looking to sell. Cook County has committed $600,000 in demolition funds for the, to demolish the entire two buildings. The demolition contractor that the county recommended gave us an estimate of $1.35 million. Montel has a basement that is full of water and needs to be pumped out, and the other building has asbestos. So, we're working on getting revised quotes to take down just the Montel building for $600,000 or less, and then work on getting money to take down the other building. Cook County is updating the demolition application, and the city does currently own the properties. Tax illinked land is moving along. ITHAT has pushed back the bridge project. They're trying to get the land under the bridge. We're trying to get the land under the bridge for parking. The state wants to charge for lighting under the bridge and talk about how many cars we can park under there, et cetera. There being no further business, motion to adjourn was made by Alderman Bellato and second by Alderman Carr. All were in favor. The meeting was adjourned at 8:36 p.m. Our next, the next meeting was on October 12th. There was no quorum, so we just received updates from the different departments. Sean Terry presented the business license report. Approved business licenses include Aunt Martha's, 12145 Western Avenue. They're a nationally recognized not-for-profit youth healthcare provider offering independent care coordination, basic healthcare, child welfare, and community-based services in reduction of threshold, South Suburban Mental Health Facility in Blue Island. It'll be open Monday through Friday, 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Chicago Concrete Studio, 2154 Vermont Street, is a small-scale industrial manufacturer specializing in the fabric, specializing in the fabrication of concrete counters and other related household furniture. They're operating at the old Vermont Cabinetry property. They're working on signage and other issues with facade. They will be open Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. They will have two full-time employees and a number of temporary or higher employees as needed. New business applications included Luna Auto Repair, 13547 Western Avenue. They'll focus on general auto repair, specialize in scheduled maintenance, brake repair, engine repair, and transmission servicing. They will be open Monday through Saturday, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and have two full-time employees. Alex Remodeling, 2229 Grove Street, apartment one, is seeking a home business license to operate as a general contractor. He completed a local contractor registration for Blue Island and has active insurance and bonding through September 2017. Exclusive auto sales and security, 2410 Oak Street. Mr. Gordon Hill is prospective owner. He submitted business license applications to operate and auto security installation service and used car lot in tandem. They'll be located in the space formerly utilized by multi-state transmission. They will, they are in two different zoning districts, one of which does not allow used car lots. Mr. Hill will need to go to the zoning board hearing. Gill's Construction, 3360 Edison Avenue, application to utilize the vacant lot located at the address for storage and warehousing needs associated with the home-based construction block concrete business. There's drainage issues on the property, and the property is zoned for this use, and it will have to meet the current building codes. The lot is currently gravel, which is not code. There was an update on ongoing business issues and including Union Daycare, Union Street Daycare, 2737 Union Street. The property around the building belongs to CSX, and they would not allow any paving for a rock around the building. She's looking for dedicated parking on Union Street. Alderman Holly expressed concern with giving dedicated parking on Union Street due to proximity of the trains and the amount of traffic going through the area when trains are stopped there. That was consensus. Tom Shorter from Tom's Auto Warehouse asked for his business license. It was explained to him that he needs to go to the building department to drawings and plans that were needed to continue the process. There being no further business, it was moved by, well, it was moved by Alderman Ossling, second by Alderman Pittman to adjourn. All were in favor, and the meeting was adjourned at 8:25. And our next meeting was scheduled for November 9th. And our next meeting now is scheduled for December, sorry, December 14th at 7:00 o'clock in the city council chambers. I do have another motion for an ordinance amending the code of Blue Island titled 15 Land Usage, Chapter 166, zoning code. I'd like to make a motion to approve that.
Motion, we have a second. Second by Alderman Pittman. Any questions? Brokaw, please.
Hullos.
Aye.
Hullos aye. Vieira.
Aye.
Vieira aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery aye. Ossling.
Aye.
Ossling aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman aye. Frausto.
Aye.
Frausto aye. Johansson.
Aye.
Johansson aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly aye. Eleven eyes, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Anything else? Nope, that's it, Your Honor. The Finance Committee?
Okay, after the Finance Committee, I'd like to make a motion for approval of payroll for October 21st, 2016, in the amount of $359,381.99.
Do you have a motion? Do you have a second, Alderman Ossling? Any questions? And Brokaw, please.
Hullos.
Aye.
Hullos aye. Vieira.
Aye.
Vieira aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Rita.
Aye.
Rita aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery aye. Ossling.
Aye.
Ossling aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman aye. Frausto.
Aye.
Frausto aye. Johansson.
Aye.
Johansson aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly aye. Eleven eyes, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Anything else? Nope, that's it, Your Honor. The Finance Committee?
Okay, after the Finance Committee, I'd like to make a motion for approval of payroll for October 21st, 2016, in the amount of $359,381.99.
Do you have a motion? Do you have a second, Alderman Ossling? Any questions? Brokaw, please.
Hullos.
Aye.
Hullos aye. Vieira.
Aye.
Vieira aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery aye. Ossling.
Aye.
Ossling aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman aye. Frausto.
Aye.
Frausto aye. Johansson.
Aye.
Johansson aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly aye. Eleven eyes, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Next, I'd like to make a motion for approval of accounts payable for November 2nd, 2016, in the amount of $549,293.37.
Do you have a motion? Do you have a second, Alderman Bellato? Any questions? Brokaw, please.
Hullos.
Aye.
Hullos aye. Vieira.
Aye.
Vieira aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery aye. Ossling.
Aye.
Ossling aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman aye. Frausto.
Aye.
Frausto aye. Johansson.
Aye.
Johansson aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly aye. Eleven eyes, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Anything else? Nope, that's it, Your Honor. The Finance Committee?
Okay, after the Finance Committee, I'd like to make a motion for approval of payroll for November 21st, 2016, in the amount of $359,381.99.
Do you have a motion? Do you have a second, Alderman Bellato? Any questions? Brokaw, please.
Hullos.
Aye.
Hullos aye. Vieira.
Aye.
Vieira aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery aye. Ossling.
Aye.
Ossling aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman aye. Frausto.
Aye.
Frausto aye. Johansson.
Aye.
Johansson aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly aye. Eleven eyes, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Anything else? Nope, that's it, Your Honor. The Finance Committee?
Okay, after the Finance Committee, I'd like to make a motion for approval of payroll for November 21st, 2016, in the amount of $359,381.99. Do you have a motion? Do you have a second, Alderman Pittman? Any questions?
Mr. Gordon Hill is prospective owner. He submitted business license application to operate an auto security installation service and used car lot in tandem. They'll be located in the space formerly utilized by multi-state transmission. They will, they are in two different zoning districts, one of which does not allow used car lots. Mr. Hill will need to go to the zoning board hearing. Gill's Construction 3360 Edison Avenue. Application to utilize the vacant lot located at the address for storage and warehousing needs associated with the home-based construction flat concrete business. There's drainage issues on the property and the property is zoned for this use and it will have to meet the current building codes. The lot is currently gravel, which is not code. There was an update on ongoing business issues and including Union Daycare, Union Street Daycare, 2737 Union Street. The property around the building belongs to CSX and they would not allow any paving for around the building. She's looking for dedicated parking on Union Street. Holly is most concerned with giving dedicated parking on Union Street due to proximity of the trains and the amount of traffic going through the area when trains are stopped there. That was consensus. Tom Schroeder from Tom's Auto Warehouse asked for his business license. It was explained to him that he needs to go to the building department to drawings and plans that were needed to continue the process. There being no further business, it was moved by, well, it was moved by Oliver Nosling, second by Oliver Pittman to adjourn. All were in favor and the meeting was adjourned at 8:25. And our next meeting was scheduled for November 9th. And our next meeting now is scheduled for December, sorry, December 14th at 7 o'clock in city council chambers. I do have another motion for an ordinance amending the Code of Blue Island title 15 Land Usage, Chapter 166 zoning code. I'd like to make a motion to approve that.
Motion, we have a second. Second, Oliver Pittman. Any questions? We'll call, please.
Kulos.
Aye.
Kulos, aye. Viega.
Aye.
Viega, aye. Velado.
Aye.
Velado, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Osling.
Aye.
Osling, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Frosto.
Aye.
Frosto, aye. Johansson.
Aye.
Johansson, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Eleven ayes, your honor.
Thank you very much. Anything else? Nope, that's it, your honor. The finance committee?
Okay, after the finance committee, I'd like to make a motion for approval of payroll for October 21st, 2016 in the amount of $359,381.99.
Got a motion, we got a second, Oliver Nosling. Any questions? We'll call, please.
Kulos.
Aye.
Kulos, aye. Viega.
Aye.
Viega, aye. Velado.
Aye.
Velado, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Osling.
Aye.
Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Frosto.
Aye.
Frosto, aye. Johansson.
Aye.
Johansson, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Eleven ayes, your honor.
Thank you.
Next, I'd like to make a motion for approval of accounts payable for November 2nd, 2016 in the amount of $549,290.37.
Got a motion, we have a second. Oliver Velado, any questions? We'll call, please.
Kulos.
Aye.
Kulos, aye. Viega.
Aye.
Viega, aye. Velado.
Aye.
Velado, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Frosto.
Aye.
Frosto, aye. Johansson.
Aye.
Johansson, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Eleven ayes, your honor.
Thank you.
Next, I'd like to make a motion for approval of accounts payable for November 2nd, 2016 in the amount of $549,290.37.
Got a motion, we have a second. Oliver Velado, any questions? We'll call, please.
Kulos.
Aye.
Kulos, aye. Viega.
Aye.
Viega, aye. Velado.
Aye.
Velado, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Osling.
Aye.
Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Frosto.
Aye.
Frosto, aye. Johansson.
Aye.
Johansson, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Eleven ayes, your honor.
Thank you.
Next, a resolution authorizing execution of intergovernmental agreement between Illinois Department of Public Health and the City of Blue Island.
Got a motion, we have a second. Oliver Vera, any questions? We'll call, please.
Kulos.
Aye.
Kulos, aye. Viega.
Aye.
Viega, aye. Velado.
Aye.
Velado, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Osling.
Aye.
Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Frosto.
Aye.
Frosto, aye. Johansson.
Aye.
Johansson, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Eleven ayes, your honor.
Thank you.
And next, a resolution authorizing execution of an intergovernmental agreement by and between the City of Blue Island and the Forest Preserve District of Cook County for the Cal Sag Trail East segment.
Got a motion, second by Oliver. Holly, any questions? We'll call, please.
Kulos.
Aye.
Kulos, aye. Viega.
Aye.
Viega, aye. Velado.
Aye.
Velado, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Frosto.
Aye.
Frosto, aye. Johansson.
Aye.
Johansson, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Eleven ayes, your honor.
Thank you.
Okay, we're only halfway through. Next, a resolution approving payment agreement with Illinois Department of Transportation, traffic signal modernization, intersection channelization, and committing the necessary matching funds.
We have a motion, we have a second. Oliver Johansson, any questions? We'll call, please.
Kulos.
Aye.
Kulos, aye. Viega.
Aye.
Viega, aye. Velado.
Aye.
Velado, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Frosto.
Aye.
Frosto, aye. Johansson.
Aye.
Johansson, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Eleven ayes, your honor.
Thank you.
Next, a resolution for improvement by the municipality under the Illinois Highway Code for Project 06001700TL.
Got a motion, we have a second. Oliver Velado, any questions? We'll call, please. Who was that second? Sorry. Oliver Velado, thank you.
Kulos.
Aye.
Kulos, aye. Viega.
Aye.
Viega, aye. Velado.
Aye.
Velado, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Frosto.
Aye.
Frosto, aye. Johansson.
Aye.
Johansson, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Eleven ayes, your honor.
Thank you.
Next, a resolution authorizing execution of intergovernmental agreement between Illinois Department of Public Health and the City of Blue Island.
Got a motion, we have a second. Oliver Vera, any questions? We'll call, please.
Kulos.
Aye.
Kulos, aye. Viega.
Aye.
Viega, aye. Velado.
Aye.
Velado, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Osling.
Aye.
Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Frosto.
Aye.
Frosto, aye. Johansson.
Aye.
Johansson, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Eleven ayes, your honor.
And then also a resolution for improvement by the municipality under the Illinois Highway Code, Project 070017600PP.
Got a motion, second by Oliver. Holly, any questions? We'll call, please.
Kulos.
Aye.
Kulos, aye. Viega.
Aye.
Viega, aye. Velado.
Aye.
Velado, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Frosto.
Aye.
Frosto, aye. Johansson.
Aye.
Johansson, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Eleven ayes, your honor.
Thank you.
Next, a resolution authorizing execution of intergovernmental agreement between Illinois Department of Public Health and the City of Blue Island.
Got a motion, we have a second. Oliver Velado, any questions? We'll call, please.
Kulos.
Aye.
Kulos, aye. Viega.
Aye.
Viega, aye. Velado.
Aye.
Velado, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Osling.
Aye.
Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Frosto.
Aye.
Frosto, aye. Johansson.
Aye.
Johansson, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Eleven ayes, your honor.
Thank you.
Next, a resolution authorizing execution of an intergovernmental agreement by and between the City of Blue Island and the Forest Preserve District of Cook County for the Cal Sag Trail East segment.
Got a motion, we have a second. Oliver Velado, any questions? We'll call, please.
Kulos.
Aye.
Kulos, aye. Viega.
Aye.
Viega, aye. Velado.
Aye.
Velado, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Osling.
Aye.
Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Frosto.
Aye.
Frosto, aye. Johansson.
Aye.
Johansson, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Eleven ayes, your honor.
Thank you.
Next, a resolution authorizing execution of an intergovernmental agreement by and between the City of Blue Island and the Forest Preserve District of Cook County for the Cal Sag Trail East segment.
Got a motion, we have a second. Oliver Velado, any questions? We'll call, please.
Kulos.
Aye.
Kulos, aye. Viega.
Aye.
Viega, aye. Velado.
Aye.
Velado, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Osling.
Aye.
Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Frosto.
Aye.
Frosto, aye. Johansson.
Aye.
Johansson, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Eleven ayes, your honor.
And next, a resolution authorizing execution of an intergovernmental agreement by and between the City of Blue Island and the Forest Preserve District of Cook County for the Cal Sag Trail East segment.
Got a motion, we have a second. Oliver Velado, any questions? We'll call, please.
Kulos.
Aye.
Kulos, aye. Viega.
Aye.
Viega, aye. Velado.
Aye.
Velado, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Frosto.
Aye.
Frosto, aye. Johansson.
Aye.
Johansson, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Eleven ayes, your honor.
Thank you.
Okay, we're only halfway through. Next, a resolution approving payment agreement with Illinois Department of Transportation, traffic signal modernization, intersection channelization, and committing the necessary matching funds.
We have a motion, we have a second. Oliver Johansson, any questions? We'll call, please.
Kulos.
Aye.
Kulos, aye. Viega.
Aye.
Viega, aye. Velado.
Aye.
Velado, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Frosto.
Aye.
Frosto, aye. Johansson.
Aye.
Johansson, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Eleven ayes, your honor.
Thank you.
Next, a resolution for improvement by the municipality under the Illinois Highway Code, Project 9600149BR.
Got a motion, we have a second. Oliver Velado, any questions? We'll call, please. Who was that second? Sorry. Oliver Velado, thank you.
Kulos.
Aye.
Kulos, aye. Viega.
Aye.
Viega, aye. Velado.
Aye.
Velado, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Frosto.
Aye.
Frosto, aye. Johansson.
Aye.
Johansson, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Eleven ayes, your honor.
Thank you.
And the last, but not least, a resolution directing and authorizing the mayor and the city of Blue Island to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the county of Cook, community development block grant funded project 1606002 for the street reconstructions of Greenwood Avenue and market streets.
City clerk, we have a...
Yeah, there, I do want to make a correction. There was a Stridner's error on the first page there in the third line from the bottom. What you received, it says 2012 community development block grant. It is 2016 and the resolution will be passed and reflect the proper date.
Okay. Is that okay? A second, Oliver Pittman. Are you questioning?
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
On number 11, it says directing and authorizing the mayor and the city clerk, Nancy Redd, the city of Blue Island.
Sorry.
Okay. So, all right. Oliver, go ahead. Question? Second, second. Any questions? We'll call, please.
Kulos.
Aye.
Kulos, aye. Viega.
Aye.
Viega, aye. Velado.
Aye.
Velado, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Pittman.
Aye.